Welcome, everybody, to the Wednesday, November 8, 2023, meeting of the New Hampshire Select Board. If we could start the meeting with the pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Sorry for the couple-minute late start. Mr. Guide would like to read something to the town.
Just to avoid all confusion, I know there's been some issues lately that people don't know what's going on. I'm just going to read Police Chief Jewett's resignation letter, just so everybody knows what it says and that we have received it, so they all know. "I write to advise you that upon the expiration of my employment agreement on December 21st, 2023, I will not be seeking a renewal of my contract. It has been an honor and a privilege to serve the community of Newton. Since arriving as patrolman to the last many years as your chief, I have enjoyed this job immensely. I will be working with the interim town administrator to finalize all the documents associated with my departure. It will be available until December 21st, 2023, in any capacity the board deems appropriate. Respectfully, Mike Jewett, Chief of Police, Newton."
Thank you, Mr. Guide.
And I'd just like to add to that, and he goes into this, but, you know, Chief Jewett worked for the town for 22 years, worked his way up from patrolman all the way to chief. That's no small accomplishment. And if you ask people why they moved to Newton, they often say because it's a quiet, safe town, and Chief Jewett certainly had a lot to do with that. So we thank him for his service, which isn't, as Dan said, isn't quite done until December 21st, but, you know, definitely thank you to him for his service to the town all these years.
Citizens in part? Anybody out there in TV land or here and present that has anything that they would like to come up and ask questions about or make a comment about what's on the agenda for tonight?
I'd love to put off my question.
Nope, too late, we're moving on.
That was much too late, much too late.
Could you set on the agenda? So I just have a quick question about budgets that are coming up. Is it, my understanding is that we will not be giving merit raises to anybody this year? I just need to know so I can adjust my budget if not, if that's not the case, or if it's the case.
Well, it would be the case if the money was in the budget. So the department heads need to put in what they feel for their salaries, what it should be or what it's going to be appropriately, and then it would be up to the citizens of the town. And we're going to make that, distinguish that fact when we have the open forums and everybody's here, that this is what we've been talking about.
Okay, so basically, I should include it?
Exactly.
You said this year, you mean for next year's budget?
Correct.
Yes, you should include it.
2024 budget, sorry.
Absolutely include it.
Okay.
Is there a percentage that you would like globally applied to all departments?
That is not a bad idea.
Ten, four?
Yeah, you know, we've talked about it before, and you look familiar. I think you were on the board last year. And, you know, a couple of years ago, we talked about doing a COLA.
Yep.
Warren article. Might not be a bad idea to consider this year. I mean, we don't have to decide tonight, right? But the cost of living adjustment that we can put, you know, Article III, would you like to give across the board 3%? You know, it's something to think about, and we'll obviously have plenty of time to talk about it.
Okay, thank you.
So I think what you'd like to know is, your budget can be adjusted through the process according to what the council can decide.
Okay. All right.
It should at least include what they're getting now, even though we had the default because they did get a raise before.
Right, so yes, that is included.
Yep.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
One thing I'd like to get up and say to the citizens.
Uh-oh. No. Stop. Go ahead.
Good evening, Joe Simone. I just want to, just want to say that I'd like to extend a good thank you to Vanessa and the recommission for what they did for a trunk or treat this year. I thought it went, it was a very, very good, very, very good turnout. I was very pleased. It's one of the first times in probably in 10 years that I've seen such a turnout for an event in town, and I just want to just say thank you to them for everything they did, and hopefully we can do it again next year and make it a lot better.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Joe.
I think the trick is handing out free candy, so maybe we should do that.
Yeah, it seems to motivate them.
Maybe we should do that at board meetings.
All right, nobody on TV land? One of our million viewers up there?
Assistant assessing in the health office.
Okay, we'll move on to administration. The fire department line item transfer.
Good evening, board. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. A year ago, I stood in front of the board for my proposed 23 budget and asked for $30,000 because the call volume was going up. I'm respectfully asking the board to take the $30,000 that's currently in my budget out of grant, I forgot what it is.
Match.
Grant match and move that into the salary line. When I stood up here, I believe it was mad ass, what happens if you don't get the 30? I says we'll probably be shutting down in September, October. As the board knows, I was out for several weeks. We made it until November. So respectfully asking for the board to move it, it will keep, the budget will stay the same, so we're just moving it from grant match to salaries.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, there's two schools of thought on how you can approach this. You can do as the chief requests, which is to approve moving money from grant match to salaries. Or you can leave the salary line, continue to go to deficit, so you have a real number at the end of the year of how much money you need in salaries. And you accomplish the same thing, it's just how you want to see it going forward.
I'd almost rather see it go negative.
And it's one of the things, it's like, we've been talking about this for a while, right? Like, this is not news. This, what do you say, Bob? Where's your shocked face that we're running out of money? I mean, we, we put together a budget and we're about to start a new one, and people have to know what we're up against, so that might be a way to do it.
But for budgeting reasons, I'd like to see it go.
Well, that's what I'm saying, is, is we can get an accurate picture, you know?
In all the years since 1999, I've never had nothing in the red.
That's all right. All is a first for everything, chief.
That's nude.
The only line you have to worry about, chief, is your bottom line.
Yeah, yeah.
That'll go red, but your bottom line.
We're just going to blame you, so it's all right.
But there's nothing new for you.
Joking, joking.
I have a whole new attitude after what I've been through.
Yeah, the key number is the bottom line, but that, that line item, salary line item, being in the red, we can see exactly.
It'll help us.
I didn't want it to go into the red, obviously without the board knowing in a public meeting.
No, it is what it is this year, and you're going to have to go in the red.
But tell the guys they'll get paid.
They'll get paid.
They're not going to not get paid.
And, and you might not be the last department head up here asking us for this. You're just the first, you know, so.
It's good to see you, though. It's been a while.
I'm glad to be alive, as I told Matt and others. I thank you guys for the card and everything the board has done while I was out with my medical. I truly appreciate it, it means a lot.
You're welcome.
We appreciate you, and we appreciate your service.
Good to see you back.
Thank you.
Chief, would you like a motion to the effect allowing you to go into the red, so it's in the record?
Yes, please.
Can somebody make that motion?
I'll make a motion to allow the fire department's salary line to go into the negative.
Seconded.
Seconded by, we'll say, Mike.
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And that would be unanimous.
Thank you, board.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Announcements. Treats for troops collection ends today. And would you like to say anything, Robin, about what took place in?
So we collected a good amount of candy. I don't have the exact weight, but Terex is going to ship it for us, and we just want to say thank you to them for shipping it.
Awesome, thank you.
Awesome, thank you, Robin, for taking care of that. We appreciate it, you and the clerks. Transfer station will be closed Saturday, actually, 11:11 will be Monday, and the town offices will be closed on Monday, whereas the town is already closed on Friday. The holiday falls on the Saturday. We opted to have town hall closed on Monday so that the employees would have their due holiday set in place instead of making it a floating holiday for all of them. So that's that.
Maybe repeat that. The dump will be closed on Saturday. There you go.
Yeah.
And I think, I think Pete, you're flashing that with Trish's help. That's, if you're leaving the transfer station, it's right there, so don't.
And that's just what I was going to say. Actually, after Veterans Day, I assume the transfer station is closed on Thanksgiving, since that's a Thursday. I'll change the sign for those people that would think we would be open on Thanksgiving Day.
Sure.
If you want me to do that.
Please.
Okay.
Thank you, Trish. Recruitment process, MRI.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, the first thing I'd like to do is to point out that those of us who are familiar with the goings on in government, we tend to use acronyms, and people that we're talking to or in front of has no clue. MRI is Municipal Resources Incorporated. They're a municipal recruitment firm, and they do assessment and provide department heads to communities that are in transition. The proposal is to have MRI conduct the recruitment for a police chief, permanent police chief. Right now, the void is being filled by retired Exeter chief, Rich Kane. And I believe the board wants this process started yesterday.
Yes.
Yep.
Absolutely.
So I think that the motion would be to approve the agreement with Municipal Resources Incorporated and authorize me to engage them to start the recruitment process for Newton Police Chief.
With that, with that all said, I move to approve the recruitment contract with MRI and authorize the chairman to sign on behalf of the town.
Seconded by Mike. All in favor?
Aye.
That would be unanimous, thank you. Staff reports. We have a tower presentation from Vertex Towers LLC, please.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Two, one for the record.
Anybody want a mint?
No, thank you.
No, I'm okay.
Good evening. My name is Brennan Gill. I'm with Vertex Towers. I'm the Director of Site Acquisition. I want to thank the board for having me here tonight to discuss the possibility of building a tower on town land. I was approached by Trish a few months ago to put something together that could be beneficial to the town, that meets the town's needs, and that would be an appropriate development for a tower as well. A little bit about Vertex. We are a New England-based tower development firm. We are independently owned, we develop towers, we work with every major carrier, municipalities, federal and local governments, on their communication needs. We work, you know, there's been a number of towers over the years that worked in cooperation with local governments, whether at the state level or the local level. It's pretty standard practice that, you know, the top of the tower is always reserved for municipal communications, whatever their needs may be. The spot that was originally proposed is at the transfer station in town, and we have looked at that, and that site is sufficient. There's also another location off of Maple Ave that we feel that it might be a little bit better because of, I don't, I'm not sure what the transfer station uses for its operational purposes, but as you go kind of further north on the property, you're starting to get into some wetlands issues, runoffs as well, and transfer stations have always been an issue. You just never know. And when working with the major carriers, they're always very cautious of, you know, being liable for anything that may or may not be their concern. So we try to find areas that are clean, suitable, right elevation, right topography line, line of sites, and buildable as well. And this Maple Ave property that the town owns does a really good job of providing visual, the vegetation there provides a visual canopy to really block out any visual line of sight in the area. And it also is at the right elevation that we can maximize the coverage of the tower. The tower that we're proposing would be 190 feet, lattice tower. And I included a sketch based off of a recent tower that we've done, a similar site, where you'll see that at the very top, the town would have the top, what we call a RAD center, and that's where you attach the antennas, and then the co-location for the wireless carriers would go below there. And then at the base of the tower, it would be fenced off, and there'd be pads for the town, and then also for the wireless carriers as well, for their ground equipment. Then I do have a few questions as far as the permitting goes for the town, how, you know, the process may go. Reading through the town bylaw, there is an exemption for being a municipal tower, that we could bypass the wireless ordinance and just go right, as long as we get our NEPA approval and our other SHIPO approvals, we should be fine to build with a building permit only. And I think that'd be a discussion that the board would want to have with the town council and potentially a joint planning board as well, just to make sure everyone's on the same page. As far as the timeline of the project, that's really subject to entering into a lease agreement with the town. That can happen fairly quickly on our end. I'm not sure if that has to go to a town vote for an order for the town enter into an agreement, but we can address that as it goes along. Once a lease is signed, usually we would have to get wetland surveys done, our engineers would go out there and do a meets and bounds survey of the property, we would do topography shoots and do a full site plan of the telecommunications facility. And then at the same time, if we have to go through the planning board, we would start that process, and we would run our NEPA report, which is a federally regulated report, covers everything from environmental, endangered species, vegetation, native burial grounds, anything like that, anything you can think of, it's covered in that report, just in case there has to be a mitigation issue. That process takes about three months to get all that kind of red tape stuff back from the NEPA. There's an FAA study that goes fairly quickly, and then construction of the site, once we order the tower, it takes about a month, month and a half to build the tower. Tower would get stacked in a day, maybe two days, depending on weather. The location I provided at the end here, our internal radio frequency team provided a coverage plot, so this is actually the coverage that would be provided to the town. The blue is at neg 95, and that would be considered a very strong, reliable signal indoors. The yellow is at neg 105, and that would be a reliable outdoor signal. And this actually, this location plays well with the other sites, other towers in town and other towers in the area. Currently, we just built a tower in Kensington at the Rosenkrantz property, that was a 185 footer, and that will cover 107 south, and then this tower would actually meet up well with it, and they would all blend in well together.
I do have a question. I see Newton Junction over here is not in that yellow and bluish area. What's the, what can be done to get that area covered?
We're working on a tower right now in North Plastow that will come over that way. There is, there are a few towers over that way already. They are potentially lower, but there are towers in that area already.
Whereabouts?
The water tower.
Hold the one up in Plastow?
Yeah.
Yep.
So you're saying you're going to bounce it, you're going to put a repeater over there to bounce that signal to cover Newton Junction?
Yep. Yeah, they, they kind of all mesh together, so the, just because what we're showing here, if I put everything on there, that map, it would look like a giant blob of, blob of colors. You wouldn't, you wouldn't be able to see what it does.
It's definitely an area of concern.
Yep, absolutely. And I believe the town has municipal whips on that tower, but it's at a lower height, which is probably one of the things that's affecting the coverage in that area. I believe they might be at, don't quote me on this, 85, 65 to 85 feet, which, you know, if you're going to hit a topography shelf or something like that, it's definitely going to impact the line of sight of the whips.
Are you going to be able to have a generator, will we provide a generator for that site in case there's a power outage?
A generator?
Yeah.
Yeah, so what we do, I know typically what we can do is we install the town whips when we put the tower up. If you have certain communication equipments, we can work with Trish and the department heads on what their communication needs are, and a generator as well, we can source one. I know there was talk of having a grant, but we can definitely source one as well and have it installed.
And you said in the other letter that I, I looked up that we had, that we would receive 30% income?
Yep, yep, so it's 30% of all gross revenue on the tower. So this is, it's really a great way for the town to earn revenue. We obviously take all the costs of the development of the site, all the regulatory, all the management, the capital costs of it, and then we work with all the carriers, so there'll be space for all of them to come on, which fits in line with the town bylaw as well. And it just, on that side of things, it just depends on what their budgets are, but I feel confident this would be a good location to get them all on there.
Could you provide us with some type of a snapshot as to what year one, one through 10 would be in terms of revenue?
Like a rental projection?
Yes.
Yep, I can do that.
I'd like to see that.
Yeah, typically, all the, the way we calculate rent is based off of weight of the equipment to install, so that fluctuates, but we can, we have some pretty solid numbers that we can put forth.
And I also read that you guys maintain the area as far as keeping it?
Yep, so the access road into the site, the compound area, the utilities are all under our burden of maintenance, so we would, if there's a, you know, the initial construction, obviously, we take care of, but if there's ever a dying or dead tree that would have to come down, before it causes damage, we notify the town that we'd be taking it down. Invasion of species, we make sure that, you know, the site's clean, nothing's getting overgrown, and then obviously access to the site as well, the access road in, repairing any washouts, if there are any, and then the fencing and compound area as well.
How many typical, typical carriers would you have on there on a tower?
Typically, we, we run three to four. Mainly, it's AT&amp;T, Verizon, T-Mobile. Dish Network is the new carrier that's come on since T-Mobile and Sprint have merged, and then there's US Cellular. US Cellular kind of runs a little bit different of network, although they're evolving to kind of compete with Verizon, AT&amp;T a little bit more. So I would say definitely four at some point, and then the fifth carrier could come along as well.
Now, do we get choice placement?
Yep, right at the top. And that's why we provide this, there's two types of towers that we could do. One's called a monopole, and one's called a lattice tower. The lattice tower is better from a construction standpoint, for mounting municipal whips at the top, there's allowed for more mounting points, so it just creates better spacing, it's better on maintenance and everything like that.
Sure.
So that's kind of why we go with this design, this, and where visually, we'll fly a balloon to see what it will look like in that area, but I've driven the area pretty well, and I don't think you're going to see it from any places.
Any other questions?
I do have a few questions for the board. Just as far as the leasing side of things, is there, it's just kind of more gathering information and then coming out with a game plan to issue? Are you going to issue an RFP, or is it, what's the thought process there?
And I'm, I'm sorry, I was reading something. You said as far as the leasing and what?
Yep. To enter into a lease agreement with the town, what would the process preferably be from the town's standpoint?
Yeah, so I believe we'd have to put it on the warrant if it was an extended lease, right? Does that sound right?
I think it's more than, more than a year.
Yeah.
Yep, that would be required.
And we probably, we probably wouldn't want to sign one-year leases, you know what I mean?
Yeah, we wouldn't.
So we'd probably have to put it on a warrant, and, you know, we can get town council's recommendation as to, maybe there's a clause in there where it renews, so we don't have to put it.
Once it's signed, you have to put it on every five years, it'll be done.
And I saw you guys are interested in trying to do a 10-year lease at each interview.
It's a 10-year initial lease with multiple reoccurring terms. You know, from our standpoint, we would love the tower to be up for as long as possible, as long as the town, you know, wants it there.
Yeah.
So these are incredibly expensive to put up, so it's not something we want to put up and take down the next day.
I think the moral of the story is wherever we decide to go with this, we need to bake it into our, our 2024 town meeting plan, so you can kind of extrapolate from that what the deadlines for decision-making would be, so.
Okay. Any other questions for us?
Nope, that was it.
All right, well, thank you very much for your time.
Just, could you, I could hear, where is the location?
It's, so it's even further behind the transfer station. It's still behind the transfer station, but the road would be coming in off of Maple versus, do you know what I'm saying? It's so far back behind the transfer station that the road would be coming in off of Maple, and we own a slice where you can do that, so it works.
And it would be hidden.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it, you know.
Yeah, do you know how many feet? I didn't even look.
185, you said.
Off the road? 185 feet off the road.
Off the road, it's about, I would have to get in there with, you know, with the surveyors, but roughly speaking, it's about 570 feet off the road.
Okay.
Yes, I probably.
Yeah, no, all right, that's fine.
Yeah.
Yeah, so the topography, like I said, it's just a really ideal location because the tree vegetation is going to shield it, and you would have to, you know, drive down that access driveway to find it.
Sure.
Which obviously would have a lock gate at the front as well, so.
All right, thank you, and you'll get us the?
Yep, the revenue.
Go ask for.
Brendan, you okay?
Yep.
So just a couple of things that we'll need to, to remind you of. I'm not exactly sure we're on Maple, but we do have the row corner being redone, so you may want to think about in relation to how that's going to work. So when the state comes in and does that, stops, four-way stop, and then redoes that intersection, I don't know how far down on Maple this is going. Something to think about.
Pretty far.
Way down.
Way down, all right, so that's good. The other thing we need to remember, too, is I believe we need a bond. We'll have to, they'll have to put up a bond in case they go bankrupt, we can take the tower down, should it have to come down, just like at the other companies. Just consider that, you need to consider those two things.
Thank you.
The bond's not an issue, that's kind of standard procedure, so.
Anything else? Anybody else? Nobody on TV land? Again, we thank you for your time.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
The only other thing I'd add is we, we might want to schedule a non-public, maybe to, because we have two quotes, two bids, so we might want to schedule an upcoming non-public to discuss which one we want to pick, so.
Sure.
If that makes sense. Like, two weeks from tonight.
You want to make sense?
Every now and then, I try to make sense, but maybe two weeks from tonight, and that way, nobody's.
Hanging in the wind.
Exactly.
So, yeah, we'll be able to, you know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. If, if I may, Mr. Chair, before- If, if I may, Mr. Chair, before, before we start this, and so it begins, right? Like, this is, this is where, for me, it's like, it's like we spent five months out of the year putting together the warrant and then seven months trying to execute against us. So for those who are new on the board, this is, you know, the, really a, a big chunk of what the job is as, as a select board. And I think we all know by now, we, we put out a proposed budget last year. I think we thought it was a realistic budget. The voters turned it down. We went to a default budget. I mean, the, the thing, things happen. I think the postmortem on that, the board's been talking that we need to be better salespeople as to why the budget is what it is as a board, as department head. So I think you're gonna see more of that. But I wanted to say before we start this, because I've been through this a few times now, if, if you're a voter and you're just gonna vote with your wallet, I can't fault you for that. I think I've done that before, you know? It's like, this one's gonna cost me more than that one, so I'm gonna voting it, vote for the cheaper. But my challenge out there is to, if you're somebody with a platform in town, whether it be a social media following, or maybe you want to get up at, you know, the deliberative or meet the candidates night or something, and encourage people to vote against the proposed budget. I would challenge you to be part of the process before you do that. We always say we have goods, plenty of good seats available in this room right now, right? Like, this is probably the most people we've had in this room in a while. There's plenty of room to come in here, raise your hand, ask questions. No question will be not engaged, right? You can ask the same questions that we get to ask. You're all stockholders, so to speak. You can go on the Zoom, you can ask questions from the Zoom. So after all of that, after four and a half, five months of doing that, if you still want to encourage people not to vote for the proposed budget, and we don't even know what that is right now. We could have a proposed budget lower than the, the default. I'm dreaming if I'm saying, you know, because we're, we're not immune to all the record inflation that's been going on. The stuff that costs you money in your house costs us money in Town Hall. So I just wanted to say that, that people get involved, ask questions. Then if you want to go out on social media or stand up in a meeting and encourage people to vote against our proposed budget, then you have a little more credibility with me because you've been through the process. So I'm off my soapbox now, so.
No, I, I just want to add to that, right? It, it is important. And if you are gonna get up and say not to do something, or you're going to say to do something, you need to explain to yourself and to those that you're saying this to, why? And I would encourage people to use facts versus emotions and feelings. There's a lot of emotions and feelings on social media that come out that aren't very factual. So the facts are, the economy is, it is what it is. The costs are up, as Matt said, right? The town is preparing its mail, its 2024 budget mail. You need to buy groceries to make the mail. And we all know the groceries are up. That's just the way the budgeting process is gonna go this year again. So again, I would just encourage people to use facts. Whether you're pro or con something, stick to the facts about it. Thank you.
And I will add that if you have been following the select board this year, we have been very transparent about everything and anything that we have made decisions on, anything that has been dealt with, with this town, and the way that we have taken care of matters. And when we do this and we have, the town comes in and sits, and we go over the warrants, and we go over the budget, I am going to say several times that this all hinges, like Matt and Mike were talking about, in, on your laps. So during the course of this year, we've had numerous people show up at meetings and talk about why roads are falling apart, why they're not being able to take care of, why we're not doing a little bit more with the rec, the playground for the kids and all of that. And we say we're on the default budget. So this year, when we do this, next year, when we turn around and you come back to us, if we end up falling on a default budget and things don't get approved, like Matt said, and that due diligence isn't done, we are gonna sit here and say to you that the voters of this town did not put the money in the budget. That is why these things did not get taken care of and why they were unable to be addressed. And it will, it will be as simple as that. We will try to do the best that we can with what money is in the budget, because we do have the flexibility of being able to, once the bottom line is fixed, to be able to make sure that we, what we've been doing this year, that the emergency services for the town, the transfer station, and whatever continues to be up and functioning. And as you've already heard, the fire department is going in the red. So this is where we're at, and this is what's taking place with this. So please, again, due diligence when it comes time this year, because we're already behind the eight ball because of inflation and things that for years have not been addressed and taken care of when they should have been in some cases. So with that, we have the building department. However, Sam, God bless him and his family. His son got sick, so he's unable to attend. So he's gonna come at a later date. And our prayers and wishes are with him and his family during this time. And we will move on to the transfer station.
Is there?
I think it's recreation.
Can we make a, yeah, I think it's, sorry, sorry, Pete, but I think we had.
Switched it?
Switched it around.
Okay, recreation?
There is an updated list on the shared drive if you just wanna.
Can we give the board?
Yeah.
Good evening. So I'm, I'm not, are you looking at this one distributed with a forty-nine one hundred? I don't.
I think if, if it was me, I'd start with the cover sheet, I think, that you sent. We have that as well.
Okay.
The bullets.
Yeah, so, the variables there, can you?
Oh, yeah, hold on, just a second.
So basically, what we're looking at is we're, we're taking last year's budget or this year's, the current budget, and, and there's a slight increase there for advertising postage, office supplies. There's a decrease in repairs. Looking at a possible, like we talked across the board, I think, an increase in salary for our secretary. And, and then move the warrant articles for the beach expenses, so, which we did not use this year because we couldn't get any lifeguards. Like, about fifty percent, I think, of beaches in such, in America couldn't get lifeguards, even with an increase, we did an increase in the salary for those folks. But we couldn't get, we could get one, but we couldn't, you can't have just one lifeguard. So. And, and then we remove the telephone costs because that's been moved to a different department. So apparently that's covered by the, I think Joe told us it was covered by the police department. And then we're adding in the forty, it should be five thousand, I think, though.
I, I.
Oh, five thousand, okay. I had the paper. Five thousand for the senior activities warrant article. So those, that's the senior trip in the summer and the Christmas dinner that we do.
And the barbecue?
And the barbecue, yeah, the senior barbecue that we do. So like, three events. And, and also, we do also a thing at Packer Meadows for, for the seniors. So actually four things. So a lot of, a lot of stuff comes out of that five thousand dollars. So we're just adding that all together. Instead of having the line, just the line item for rec in the, in the town budget, we're adding in the two warrant articles for senior activities and for the lifeguards and their supervisor. So we're not really asking for more money except for increase in the salary and to keep up with postage.
I, I think the other, excuse me, thing to note is your entire recreation department is in front of us right now.
Yeah, the recreation. Pat Masterson, he does a masterful job as a secretary.
I see what you did there.
There's a lot more than just being a secretary.
The, so, you know, when you talk about salaries, it's like, well, you know, we'd like to have at least a cost of living adjustment for our one employee. Everything else is done by volunteers. And as we've already discussed tonight, a lot of good stuff comes out of it, you know? And it, it isn't, it isn't a dartboard type thing, you know? Let's throw the dart at the dartboard and come up with a budget. It's like, we've done a lot of these things year in and year out. And we're basically asking for how much it actually costs us to do these things. And, and I think, Jim, you said if we added in those warrant article things, that, that, you know, the senior one has been approved for almost twenty years, I think. The lifeguards, it's, it's probably five, yeah. But are those part of the default because they've, no?
No, they will not, they have to survive one, one, one budget year. Then they're part of the default.
Okay, so once they, once they're added to the budget, they have to survive that year. It doesn't count on the, so, I mean, we're talking about it at the rec meeting. There is a risk, because the people who aren't listening to this meeting right now will think, wow, you just doubled. I think it's double, right?
I think it's more than doubled.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's more, it's more than doubled.
Yeah. What are they doing over there? The rec commission just more than doubled their budget. Well, we didn't. We just took the stuff, you know, so that's the risk.
You're moving it.
Yeah.
So are you saying that if the town votes to go to the more?
A default.
Year budget, then the senior and lifetime?
Exactly.
Yep.
Yep. So if, if we capture it as part of the budget and it's not called out in separate warrants, the risk is if we go to a default, we have no senior trips, we have no lifeguards at the beach. So.
And, and this is, even, doesn't even include Mr. Guide's part-time rec coordinator?
Right.
You were talking about.
Right, that has to go, that has to go on its own warrant.
Yeah.
You can't just put that in there.
So I, I don't know. What, what does the board think? Should we keep it? Should we not combine it? Or?
So I think this is gonna be, this is gonna be all of our jobs, right, is to educate the voter that you, you voted on this for however many years, five years, whatever it's passed for, I don't, I don't remember. It's time that we include it in the budget. I mean, it should be in the budget.
It should just be part of the regular budget, not a separate warrant.
And that's my feeling, is that it should be in the budget. So yes, we're taking a gamble, right? But we don't know what the total number looks like yet. So I mean, it's, it's almost as like, you need to present everything, like, from all of them. We need to put it all together, and then we're gonna decide, all right, is this passable or is it not passable? You know, if we, if we think as a board it's not passable, we may pull it out and put it separate. It's, it's totally a possibility, you know? But yours is the first budget we're seeing, so. I would like to see it in there. That's just my opinion, because I feel like it should be in there. The stuff that passes every year should be in the budget then.
And there is precedent, because we've done this with the police department for their new, new cruises. We've done that. We used to have a, year after year, we had the same warrant article in, so it's in the budget now, so. So there is precedent for it.
I would, I would, exactly what Dan said, took the words right out of my mouth. We can't really decide tonight, but it's, as we roll all these budgets up together, we'll know what we have to do. Some, some night in, you know, the beginning of January will be.
Okay. And we, and we'll, you know, we can help try to educate the voters using our, our social media.
Exactly. And that's, that's gonna be a big part of it, you know?
For the rec commission, yeah.
Yeah. And that goes to what, what Matt said about selling it and making sure that the people have the correct information when they make that choice when it's time to vote.
Yep.
Voters don't vote for separate budgets, right?
Correct.
With everything else, yeah.
Just in the whole budget.
So, so let me throw out a curveball there, Jim smiling at me, because this won't be my problem when it happens, if it happens. But, but, but the voters vote for a bottom-line budget. So we, as a board of selectmen, can figure out how we want to use that. So if, if they go to a default of, you know, three million, we can figure out how to use three million.
You can move the line up.
Exactly.
Correct.
Exactly. So like, if it was a separate warrant for the senior trips, for the forty-five hundred, and it failed, we couldn't hold senior trips.
You couldn't do it, but you can.
If we put it in the budget and the budget goes to default, we could use money so you could still go on a senior trip. So, or have the senior trip, not go on.
So there is.
I, I, I qualify to go on.
But, but that's, you know, that's one of those things, right?
That's the catch-22 of it.
Yeah. Okay. So any questions for me?
No.
Nope.
No, thank you for being the guinea pigs.
Yep. And thank you for explaining it as well as you did.
Well, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Mr. Chairman, one of the benefits that I didn't hear is we're reducing the number of articles.
Yeah.
From twenty. I was gonna say that, right?
Something a little bit more reasonable.
Yeah.
Because there is a mindset that after question number five, the rest are all knows. It's just automatic.
Yeah.
And if we work on lowering the number of warrant articles, accepting more managerial responsibility, because you're so close to the day-to-day, as the department heads are, you know the needs and you're able to articulate them, include them in the budget. But at the same time, reduce the amount of time someone is spent in the booth.
Yeah.
Right.
Reading and checking.
Yep.
So that was just one thought. Additional thought?
Good point.
All right. And.
Thanks.
I'm not finding that on the shared drive, so could you please call up the next transfer station?
Now we're at the transfer station. Evening, Board. Pete Gagnon, transfer station. All right. And as per usual, the usual suspects in the transfer station budget, hauling, disposal, recycling is actually doing really good this year, so we're actually able to lower that. But those first two are our big ones every year, hauling and disposal. It's never gonna, never gonna go down. Always have stuff to get rid of. Another one I noticed, vouchers. We had to increase that one again. At, at the point we're at now, vouchers are costing us more to mail to people than they are to have them printed out. So I'm wondering if maybe that's something we could do at the transfer station. Cut the mailing part out of it, save over half the cost, do how we do with our blank vouchers, check their license, have the list, do it that way. Save a little bit of money for mailing. Just wondering what your thoughts are.
I'd be all for that because I can see, like, and Joe would like to hand stuff out, so.
And how would?
And with the people as well, so.
And how would there be the, the ability to make sure that each household only does it once?
That's why we had the list. So we had the list of every household.
As it uses, then you would have it on hand.
Right. Check it off, whether, you know, right now, we're doing it as if they use theirs, or if we had to fill out one, mark it different on the sheet.
It's the same tools we use for voting, if you want to look at it that way, is, is a check, a check mark next means the person voted, you know?
Yep. Now, so as you just heard with rec, were we gonna be doing a hazardous waste next year?
No, that's every other year. It always falls in an odd year.
That's what I thought, right, okay.
Yep. So we do the vouchers every year, hazardous waste day every other.
Okay. So next year, you're probably gonna put the hazardous in your budget.
Mm-hmm. In the budget. We always do a warrant article for that.
We'll, as you just said, we want to reduce the warrants.
Absolutely, yeah.
And it will be up to the townspeople.
Copy that.
Whether or not it happens.
So that's a question, then. If it doesn't happen every year.
Every other year.
Every other year, does it go into the?
It, it needs one year of approval, right? So, so it, it makes it because it's been, you know, probably twenty years of, of every other year, but twenty years.
You know what? I'm more in favor of keeping hazardous waste. I'm more in favor of keeping hazardous waste as a ballot, because if the one year they vote no, we can be like, this is why you need to pay attention.
Yeah.
And then that's just one of those things, you know?
You have some time to think about it, so. You have some time to think about it. Not this year, it'll be the year.
I, I don't think I'd ever be in favor of having it included in the budget. I'd almost want it as a warrant article, every other year.
Every other year, so.
This is how it is, and if you vote it down, then guess what? We don't get it, because you voted it down, you know?
Putting the on the, on the taxpayer as well, so, their choice.
But when we have that warrant article, is it, are we actually taking out of the revolving fund when we do do that?
In the warrant article, yes.
Yeah, so, that, that's always a zero tax impact anyway.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
That is true.
I have a question.
Yep.
Pete, can you point to any lines in this document, three-page document, that you think you'll be back before the board, before December 31st, asking to win deficit?
Uh, yeah, probably hauling or disposal. It's looking like hauling right now.
Yep.
And, and disposal, every year, yeah.
Oh, and disposal's already there.
Yeah.
Yep.
So I mean, one, like we talked about with the rec folks, is we can, well, with the fire department, right, is we can move things around as necessary. So I think that's what Jim's alluding to, is we need to know sooner rather than later. Like, the fire chief just came in and said, my salary line item is in trouble. So, you know, you can let us know. As we've talked about, it's only one potential solution, but we might have to, I don't know, close on Tuesdays or something like that for the rest of, you know?
We can, we can always go back to, and this is before I started working, is the three other towns that we take some of their waste from, they were only allowed on one or two days a week. We can go back to that, cut down on a little bit of cost, but.
Cut them out altogether.
Yep.
So would you cut down on cost if all they all showed up on the one day?
Probably not, but that's never happened.
So the, the other question would be, is even if we cut the, cut the transfer station Tuesdays, let's say we take one day, then everybody just shows up on Thursday, Saturday, Sunday, it's the same volume, same haul, the only thing is, is maybe we'll save a little bit on salary.
Yeah, the savings would be miniscule, would only be the employees' salaries.
But that's, you get, you get to a point where you had, don't trip over dollars to pick up pennies, you have to be very careful.
And the, the bins would probably get filled a lot quicker and you'd be running all over the place.
Yeah.
Pete, is there any, do we have any way of knowing how much of that bulk stuff comes from the communities that we?
We have no way of tracking that. Yeah. It all just, we fill up one dumpster and, you know, we have no way of knowing if a quarter of it's from Newton and.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if people come in with, you know, with, with their trucks loaded with debris, you know, bulk debris as opposed to?
Sometimes, yeah, a lot of it, they bring a vacuum or a microwave or something, it's not always full loads.
You, another question, do you see more people, or less amount, more or less people using the recycling, like, the glass and the?
The glass, the commingled recycling has always been really strong. A lot of people do that. Cardboard has certainly picked up in the last few years.
But I hear a lot, I hear a lot of jingling of glass going into those hoppers.
Yeah, because recycling is not mandatory in town, so that's why we can't force them, but we do try and nudge them to recycle it.
Maybe we could do a pamphlet to hand out to remind people that, you know, that it would be in their advantage to do.
I can, I can reach out to the State Department of Environmental Services, they have lots of information for that, absolutely.
So Pete, I'm looking at the disposal, the budget, 130, 135,000. Your expense year-to-date, that's already now, and you're not even done with the year.
Mm-hmm.
You're at 155,000, right? The difference is already $20,000. So you're going to, for your new budget, 170,000. So you think that you're only gonna increase probably by another $15,000 this year?
Doubtful, unfortunately, that's just.
No, year-to-date, so if he's going for the whole year for next year, 170,000, he's projecting that he should finish out at roughly about that, right?
Right, but it's, the title of the column, and Diana laughed at me, because I've never been a fan of these spreadsheets, but the title of the column is budget variance, right? So to me, that means the variance in the proposed, in the default budget?
Pretty much.
So 35,000.
Basically, that means the difference between what he, what they had.
And last year, and what's proposed, yeah. So it's 35,000.
Well, because I'm looking at it as the 20,000, add that to the 135, which is giving you the?
Year-to-date variance.
155, add them, though. Add that and that comes out to?
That's not, draw a line right here, essentially.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, so everything on the right side?
Yeah.
Basically has nothing to do with what's on the left side.
And that's exactly the point I'm making. So he's, when you say, what I'm saying is, that variance right now has brought him to 155,000. We still have the year to go. So my question is, are we only gonna go another $15,000 to where he's expecting 170,000 for next year? Or should that be increased even more to cover what would possibly be the budget?
So I think based on the numbers that you're showing, your 170 is pretty shallow.
That's why, that's exactly the point that I'm making.
Take into consideration, take into consideration, next year, there'll probably be maybe 25 to 30 more houses in town as well.
And that's the other part. The town's growing, we got more, more houses going up, so that 170,000, I'm thinking, is a bit short.
Mm-hmm.
So your 135 is over, is over how many months right now?
11.
Yeah.
Over the last 11 months?
Probably 10.
Probably 10, I think.
Hold on. 135, 135, 10.
You guys, two more months of polling, and then?
So your 170 would still be on unless you think?
And that's what?
Right, your 170, technically, he's on, right? So your, your math would come up at 135, divide that by 10 times 12.
Should be 186.
I come up with 162, based on what he's doing.
186. If you take, all right, I know we're doing this, but I'll, whatever. You take the 155, where we're at right now?
Yeah.
Divided by 10, multiply that by 12.
No, that's why I did, I did the 135, you did the 155.
Yeah, 155 is where we're at right now.
Right, so you're 186, so you are shallow still.
So, but this part, this also does not include the increase in the contract.
Right, that was my other point I was gonna make.
So we have to look and see what the increase is, and we also have to look at the mattress thing. You make those phone calls, because that's a breach of contract, as far as I'm concerned, period. So yeah, this is gonna be a fun ride.
It's gonna be.
You might want to take another look at that review in this.
Absolutely, I ought to get some notes written down.
Okay.
So I would not go back and look at this as, hey, I'm trying to save money. I would go back and look at this as, what's the reality? I need to present, whether the town accepts it or not.
Yeah, you just, I need the real numbers. So you pretty much need to go back, we need to figure out what the, the contracted increase is gonna be, and extrapolate that onto that 186 number, and then you probably have your real number, and that's not even including the hauling.
It would be a lot closer.
We haven't even touched on that, you know?
Right.
And I mean, I mean, I, I think we have to say it, again, you're only the second one up here, but we have to kind of put that up to the department heads, they have to give us a realistic budget, and we have to worry about?
Making it work.
Making it work.
Right.
You know?
Hey, Bill?
How's the hauling?
Mr. Jim?
Yep.
Just a quick observation, any line that has a zero in it cannot have money transferred, transferred.
No.
It has to be opened with a dollar.
Sure.
At least one dollar.
Locking yourself out of advertising, background checks, coupons and receipts, prescriptions, electrical work. So if we put a dollar in there, we can move money into that line, because it's open.
Once you zero, once you zero that out?
Okay.
We can't pay for anything that would fall under that category. We can't put any money into that line item.
Okay, I got you.
But you're talking under the proposed 2024 budget column, correct? About the variance.
Yeah, he doesn't have zero in there for any of the proposed.
Oh, no, no.
You're looking at the wrong column.
I'm misreading it, I apologize.
No worries.
But as a general rule, that's the accounting.
Yes, true statement, absolutely.
Because then it knocks it out of the category, knocks it off your budget.
Yeah, I never have zeros in, in for the totals.
Yep.
All right, so, so I would take a, when I, if I were to go back, if this was me and I went back to look at this, it is, what have I spent month to, year-to-date, right? So it's a 10-plus, what we call a 10-plus-two budget. 10 actual, two that you're taking a guess at, use your increases, any contracts you know are gonna be increased, cost of labor increased, whatever. And then add that to that, so that you now have a best guesstimate in a 10-plus-two type of budgeting scenario. That would be my suggestion.
So I guess I, I have a question on your compactor and box rental.
Yep.
That should be a contracted price. Why are we over?
I'm sorry? Say, I didn't catch the first.
It should be a contracted price, so why is it over? Like, that should be a set price.
Yeah, because we're in a default budget.
Even then, it's still a contract, so it shouldn't matter.
Well, we just got, the contract was last year, correct?
Mm-hmm.
So.
Yeah, but the contract shouldn't matter in a default. If they went up in their contract, it doesn't matter in a default, that should have stayed, that should have gone up with the default.
Mm-hmm.
So that's why I'm asking, why he was overspend?
No, it was a new contract that was signed the same year that, for the election. So that new contract had that increase in it, and that would have been in the budget.
Yeah, but it doesn't, no, 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 it would be included in default. It doesn't matter, because it's a contracted service. So it should have been in the default budget, period.
It depends on when the contract was signed.
Yeah, it was signed after the default budget was in place.
After the, after the budget.
Under the wire.
You know what I mean? So we did the election in March, we didn't sign the budget till when? I mean, the new contract was after that, correct?
Absolutely.
That's what I'm saying.
Okay.
So that's why it's over.
Yeah, basically, the simplest way to think of the default budget is, so you're, you're starting with what was previously approved, right?
No, no, I.
And then you're adding in what was under contract, so?
Right.
It, it didn't make it in under the wire.
That's, I guess, what I'm saying. So you guys are saying you signed this contract after the?
Right. So it would be?
Well, no, because I didn't sign it.
I think it was two years ago.
So it was two years ago. So something's not right, because I didn't sign, I didn't sign the contract, right? And I was elected in March, so.
Yeah, there you go. It, it's worth looking at.
I guess it's just, try to figure out, I mean, maybe it slipped through, it's possible, right? But that should have been, if that's the case, it should have, that number should have been right.
Yeah.
Because it was a contracted service.
Yep.
It's worth checking out.
Is that, is that what it's gonna cost us this year, Pete? Is 5,000?
As of right now, yeah, we're looking good.
Okay. Because that's a set price for the year, like, although there might be an increase because of their, way their contract was worded, but, okay.
Mr. Jim, if we apply Dan's equation to the bottom line, if you go to the last page, end of the, 343,045 divided by 10, multiply it by 12, 411,654.
Got you.
Against the 426 is what you're looking at? Is, am I correct?
I see what you're saying. You took the whole budget number, divided by 10, multiplied it by 12, and that's what you got.
411,654.
I see what you're saying. The problem with that is, he wasn't fully staffed.
Right.
So I mean, that's where that doesn't, that kind of affects that. Pete, site monitoring?
That's the well testing that's done every April.
Okay, and we can go down in that?
Um, yeah.
It's not as expensive as it was before, I guess, is what I?
Yeah, I think they, they quoted us, like, $20,000, but it actually came into the 12,417.
Oh, okay, fantastic. And how, because I don't know, I haven't been here this long, how often do we have to buy resident stickers?
We haven't done it in over five years, so we're, we're about to, yeah.
You're about to? Not this year, but you will be?
Correct, yeah.
Not that I would get rid of that line, I was just asking.
Yeah, the toughest part is, as we talked about moving line items to, you know, back up things where we're running out of money, there's not many line items in this budget where there's, there's buffer, you know what I mean?
Mm-hmm.
So, so that goes back to the thing we said earlier, but as the board of selectmen, you just need to let us know when you're in danger, because we might have to go somewhere else in the overall town budget, because we have to keep hauling, right?
Yeah, right, yeah.
So. So one thing we didn't do on the last one, was we normally make a motion to accept the draft for inclusion. Not that we're accepting the budget yet, but we're just accepting the draft as it is tonight, you know? So I'm gonna make a, a motion to accept the recreation draft budget for inclusion in the overall draft as written.
Seconded?
Seconded by Joe, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And if nobody cares, I'll do the same thing for transfer station, I'll, I'll move to?
That's what you had, you wanted to go back.
Yeah, we're gonna have.
Yeah, so we got some revisions, do we?
Yeah.
Well, that's okay, I mean, either way, it's not, we're just accepting it to start to roll it up.
Nothing's fine.
Yeah, so.
Because you're accepting that budget that he's proposing in junior draft. If you want it fixed, you need to be able to go fix it first before you accept it.
Right, well, but we can, we've done that before, right?
No, you've got to be able to fix it first.
Okay, all right. Again, you look familiar, so you might know, so.
That's, that's the way I look at it.
Yeah, that's cool.
Hello, would you ask the board to make a motion to give you permission to go into deficit and disposal?
A little late. Yeah, just a bit.
So in summary, so far tonight, we're going into deficit on fire department salaries.
Yep.
Or wages, I guess is proper, and we're going into deficit on hauling trash. So for those following at home, those are our two.
Two negatives.
Negative so far. And disposably, yeah, we have to, can't just haul it, we got to pay to dispose of it.
Yep.
Pete, do you know how many exactly, how many tires you got rid of this year? If I ask, like, not right now, but like, could you go back and, like, you have a, some sort of record that you know?
Yep.
Could you come back with that number for me, please?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Tires are his life.
He likes retreading.
Yeah, so like we said, even with the voucher system, if you're going to redo that, and you want to reduce that amount in your budget, at least leave that dollar like you know. Right, so that you can keep that, that line item there and to keep it open.
Yep.
In case we need to.
Yeah, I never zero out a line, budget line.
But you could reduce it from the thousand down. Because like we said, we don't want to, we want it, we want the budget realistic, we don't want to be going so they, the town can also turn around and say, you're overtaxing us, because you're putting too much money on the line items, that's why we want it realistic ballpark figure, right around where it should be.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? Anything else? All right, thanks Pete, we'll be looking forward to getting those taken care of.
Thank you, bud, good night.
Thank you.
Thanks, Pete.
Thank you. Who's next, Robin?
Conservation.
Ms. McCarthy.
You better be quick.
She's been back there making notes.
We're going to move cable to 10:00 PM, is that okay?
Okay. So there, there's a couple of things that you probably should know. The first line on the budget, we may have another legal ad due to our meeting tonight, we had a conservation meeting, and we had to post for the public hearing. So there may be an additional invoice coming in.
What?
What? So see, you can approve it because I'm going to adjust it, no, I'm only kidding. The other thing is on trails, I may have to come before you to encumber $450, not $450, $1,450 for the engineering costs of the entrance of the peanut trail across from the old fire station. We don't have that yet, I don't know that he's going to get a chance to do it before the end of the year, he said he might. If he can.
Who's he?
The engineer that's doing the work on it. SEC Associates. But the bill, the invoice, the quote is $1,450, so I don't have an invoice yet. I got to talk to him again and see, what's the status, is it going to get done this year, or are we going to wait till next year? So I'll have to get back to you on that.
What's the $1,400 for?
The engineering costs for the fence that we're going to have to put up because we've got some issues in the peanut trail, on the opposite side of the fire station. The old fire station.
But we're not fencing, are you just making a fencing?
Where, where, parallel with the road, we need to know our frontage, it's 80 feet, but it's got to be pegged and pinned. And then with a pedestrian opening, so that people can walk into the peanut trail and not drive in, which is becoming an issue.
Okay.
There's no motorized vehicles allowed on that side. So this is about the only way we can fix it, just put a pedestrian spot, a gate, and we're going to have to go down a little bit on the peanut trail, so parallel to 108 and down the peanut trail. So when I actually get that, if it's going to be an invoice, I need to talk to him again, is it going to get done this year? It might, it might not, but if it does, if he does get it done, we're going to have to change the trail figure and add that $1,450.
So what is this normally used for?
Trails. For all our trails, all the work that we do.
What are all of our trails? I only ever hear the peanut trail talked about, so that's why I got to ask.
Oh, my God.
Does this include bush farms, like, does this?
This is anything where, where we do work, our trails, our bush farm, the property on, off Hadley.
Green Park Trails in the back.
There's trails there, our Gescora property, which we spent so much time the last couple of months on sidewalks there with engineers, because people are moving our markers. So that's what that is about.
So don't yell at me, but if I was to go to the recreation page, is there like a walking trails map?
It's not recreation.
Well, you know what I'm saying, like,
No.
If I go to the conservation page, is there a walking trails map where it lists all these trails?
Let me tell you why, we're not a trails committee, we are a conservation commission. All we do, or what we're supposed to do, is maintain habitat, vegetation, and animals, protect species. We are not supposed to invade our conservation land with trails. We allow passive recreation on some of them, some of them, motorized vehicles, but we are not, the Conservation Commission by statute
Sure.
is not a trail.
No, 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 and I get that, I guess, so I'm asking just you, I guess.
Okay.
Is there a place where there's a list of walking trails in New?
Not walking trails, just our conserva, I have a map with all our conservation land labeled, and what it might be good for, whether it's cross-country skiing, or bike riding, those kind of things. Where we allow ATVs, where we don't, where there's hunting, where we don't.
Okay.
So it's not a trail, because we really don't want people to make trails, but it's all the, all the parcels, eight acres here, 16 acres there.
Right, I guess that's what I mean, like I said, I only hear about the peanut trail.
Right.
Right?
Yes.
But if there's other trails for
Lots and lots.
walking on and stuff like that, I just, food for thought.
As an example, behind the peanut trail, one of the things that we did to connect the habitat, of course, now I'm getting off the budget, should I stop? Okay, is that what she's saying, she thinks she's in charge now?
And get up here.
I know.
And give her, so she can go home.
Can we do, we'll do cable at 10 and trails at 10:30.
Thank you, yeah.
No, trails before cable now.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
It's good information, it's something we probably should work on down the road.
I saw the budget line, and that's why we're on this topic.
Yes, yes, so you should also understand, or be told, with the conservation budget, when we don't spend all our money, which we try to volunteer all our time, so that we don't spend a lot of money doing, we don't hire people to do a lot of things, that money then is rolled over into the conservation fund, which is then what we use to buy property.
Sure.
Just so that you know that.
Okay.
And the only other thing, and I didn't realize it till I actually already sent this to Robin, sorry Diane, the payroll line is not accurate, because somehow in the beginning of the year, December's payroll ended up in January, and I'm not sure why that happened, so it showed us as a deficit in January, and I hadn't submitted any timesheets yet. So that, the payroll is going to be wrong, but we still won't go over our budget, it'll still come out in the wash.
Sure.
We'll still be fine. And the other thing we talked about at our meeting today, our advertising budget and legal, we're going to do what Planning Board does, and ZBA does, and we voted on it tonight, that starting January 1st, any developer that comes up in front of us is going to pay the legal fees, instead of us doing it, so just so that you know.
Yeah.
That's why we're leaving that figure right where it is.
Very good.
I think that's it.
First, where'd that be found in your budget? Legal?
It's been labeled, we put it in advertising, because it's a legal ad. I don't know that it should be there, we probably should have a line that says legal.
Public notices?
Public, yeah.
Okay.
Yep. But that's where it always gets thrown. Okay?
So I'm not making a motion to accept the draft, right?
Right, right. I will bring you a corrected. Okay.
It's okay to change, it's all right.
It's okay.
I think so, but you know.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
She's not next.
Definitely not, definitely not.
Bill?
Bill, you're next.
No, you're not, go ahead, get up there.
Good evening, Bill Landry Cemetery Trustee.
Hey, Bill.
All right, I'm sure you've gone over this in depth, it's such a large budget. If you just noticed the comments at the bottom that I had put in there, the budget for next year is the same as it was this year, and the same as it was last year. That will change in 2025, but this is all there is to it, and we're going to come in pretty much right on, on budget. There's still a few outstanding invoices to collect for landscaping, but we should have no issues.
So is that your annual cost for landscaping, it's pretty much $1,2,700?
Uh, yeah.
About, I mean, yeah, okay.
Yeah, and which makes up about 95%.
I can see that, yeah.
Because unlike some other departments, the cemetery trustees are elected volunteers.
Sure.
That may change in the next year or two, so be prepared to take this over.
Oh, sweet.
No, 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 we're not afford your name.
Yeah, that's always the, do you have one of the positions open this year?
Yes, we do.
Every year there is.
It will be an open position.
Yeah, so that's, it's always when you're up here presenting the budget, we always throw that out there, like, you know, if, if you're looking to get involved, this is one of those things to get involved in, it's not, not, maybe not the.
Get your feet wet, yeah.
You know.
It's, well, we've got, the three members of the trustees, we've got, it's Ron Saunders, Mike Hughes, and myself, and we've got, I think, 15, 16, and 17 years each, respectively. Respectively, that's what it is, so we're getting to the point in the age where, you know, it's time to. So just to throw something else out at you, what I'm considering is next March, maybe putting in a warrant article for a stipend, similar to trust fund type thing, you know, what is it, $500?
$400.
$400, yeah, something like that, just to try to get people maybe to step up.
Sure.
Because every year, you know, we talk to people, and, and nobody steps up, but you're all familiar with that situation, yeah. But I just want to give you a little heads up on that, we may do that just to try to generate a little interest, anyway.
Sure.
So do you have a member retiring this year?
Pardon?
Do you have a member retiring this year, or not?
Uh, there's a very good chance, yes. Yeah, very good chance. I'm having lunch with him next week, and I'm going to see if I can change his mind, but.
There you go.
So that's, that's it.
Can I make a motion to accept the?
No, you can't.
You're dying to get a motion.
I'm trying, I'm trying.
He's trying to get his name in the minutes.
Guys, let me have it, please.
He's the right one, let it go.
You guys are so awful. So I'll make a motion to accept the cemetery draft budget for inclusion in the overall draft as written.
I don't know, I think it's going to change.
Seconded by Joe, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
You good now? You good?
Give me a few minutes, okay, I want to see how Diane's budget does.
Which one's Diane's?
Cable.
Cable.
Cable, and then you're going to go.
Cable lady.
Last three.
I'm here tonight to present the 2024 proposed cable budget, it is level funded.
Nice.
All right, let's dig into this now.
So I, I'm not doing this to be funny, but it, you know, do we, in your zeros, do we want to put a dollar in there, just to protect the line items?
Were they a dollar last year?
In order to do that, it's got to be on a warrant.
So if it was, if it was zero to start with?
If it's zero to start with, even going into the new one, it's got to be put on a warrant.
Yeah.
Buck? No, we're not doing that.
To even put any money into.
To a dollar, you still need a warrant, right?
I don't.
I don't think so, I think he's.
This year's budget, it's already zeroed.
Okay.
So in order to put it in for next year's budget, it would have to be put on a warrant in order for that line item to be opened.
Interesting, but how would you ever, I know what you're saying, because you and I were in the same class, you know, but how would you ever add something, like, if you ever had an expense, you know, just show up out of nowhere, like some technology expense you never had before, you'd have to add that to your budget as a line item, and you wouldn't go to a warrant, you'd be going to a warrant by putting the proposed budget on the warrant, but I don't, so we should get some clarity on that.
According to Peyton, just today, you can add line items to new budgets before the, before the voters. You can open lines with a buck to be included in the 2024 budget.
Proposed.
You don't need to go forward.
No, you don't need a warrant for that. Because I could add any line item for, and put a dollar on it.
But what you're saying, think about it, Bob, it is going to a warrant.
Right.
Because the proposed budget is on the warrant.
That's true, it's being, it's being voted on.
Before that way, right?
Because it's being voted on, so.
Exactly.
But if it fails, and you go to a default,
Then you can't use any money towards it, right.
So is this, now that we're past all that, so I am not approving this budget, because this does not have the salary increase in it.
I believe.
I know we were back and forth on that.
Right, but I believe it will be covered. Depending on how much, depends on.
Because, I mean, I see where you're at right now, but
Right.
you think you'd still be in, within budget with the salary increase.
Depends on what you decide to do, if you go with a COLA, then, yeah, maybe I need to increase it, so. But I can only, I can't make that judgment until I know what's going on, and if the COLA doesn't pass, then.
I think we're kind of under a marching order, that all department heads should put
Yes.
the increases in their budget, however, if we go with a COLA, then we're going to ask them to go back and
Just adjust your budget.
And adjust.
So does the COLA, if you go with a COLA, it has to be a warrant article?
It doesn't have to be a warrant article, but.
No.
But that's a way of marketing.
Talking about possibly doing a COLA for all employees on a warrant. If we don't do that, though, I'd still like to see where you would want this to be at.
Okay.
Yeah.
You get what I mean, I guess?
Yeah, yeah, I'm just, yeah.
I, yeah.
I'm just kind of curious what would happen if, let's say, okay, so we'll just, all right, let me go back.
If we decide to go COLA, all of these are going to get adjusted.
Yeah.
And it, it's not a hard thing, because right, if, if the COLA is 4%, take your line item 4% minus, so it's not going to be like a hard.
Oh, no, because it's, it's different salary, so employee A may get $10, employee B may get $20, so.
I said percent, right, so if it's, if it's 4%, it's still 4% no matter which employee you're looking at.
Across that dollar.
Are you divided as?
Okay.
Yeah, that doesn't matter.
So 4% COLA increases, I'm hearing?
No.
No, 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 he threw a number out there.
Nice try.
Do I hear five?
What percentage should the departments use to add to their budget, so we don't have someone doing 12%, someone doing 3%?
I would do a rough 3%.
COLA, I think, is like 3.5 or something.
It's 3.5.
3.5.
3.5 right now.
So I have a question for the board. Is it 3.5?
Well, that's, you're exactly.
Nobody got something last year.
You're exactly right, we have, 3.5 is just kind of like a, a starting point, it could be, we as a board could decide something different, we could also decide it's different for a certain category of employees.
Here's the rub, right? I'm not.
So before you guys go off, I will take this and let you guys figure out.
Oh, no, you stay right, no, I'm just kidding.
I got to go redo this.
You do have to redo that.
Want a motion?
No, I don't want a motion.
I'll give you a motion.
Oh, because she has to adjust it.
Turn aside, let us know.
I do have a question.
Well, here's my problem, right, so they're saying COLA, saying COLA, you're the department head, right?
No, we're not a department head, we're, I'm the cable committee.
You are the cable committee?
She's the chair.
There's a few of us.
Okay. I want what you want the raise to be.
Okay.
Don't listen to what COLA, all this other stuff, like, that's what I want the department heads to come to me with, is what they want.
Okay.
Do you know what I mean?
Yep, okay.
That's what I want to see.
All right.
And then we'll make our decision how we're going to move forward, that's what I'd like to see.
I agree with that, and the concept, well, we have to understand, the concept of COLA, to me, is almost like is almost like an insurance policy in a way, you know what I mean? Like, it's, it's like, we, basically, whether the town knows it or not, they voted not to give anybody raises last year. That's what they voted for. Cause that's what the majority of the proposed budget was. So, if you have a COLA, you're actually putting it in front of the town, saying, here are wage increases, you didn't give us any last year, we wanna do it this year. So, if, if you're okay with it, there it is in black and white, vote no. But, you know.
I understand, but to a point, but then I have these unfilled positions in town that aren't COLA increases.
Yeah, yeah.
Right? So, like, you do, so we increase those wages, and then we do a COLA thing, so that increases it as, do you know what I mean? Like, I don't wanna double it up, I don't.
Yeah, to me, it's a concept, and as we said, we're not deciding tonight, right?
No, no, no.
But it's, it's one of the concepts we might choose, you know?
Right.
I do have a question, though. I see there's nothing under equipment purchase. You plan on purchasing no equipment this coming year?
Usually, um, equipment purchases, we can, we should take out of the cable revolving fund.
Okay. Are there any planned expenditures for equipment this year?
Right now, we're, I, we were kinda hoping to work on getting different microphones. And, uh, no, microphones are okay, speakers. We're gonna improve, try to improve the speakers, but, um, we're having trouble finding an audio engineer to come and help us with that.
Okay, so is that fund gonna sustain what you wanna buy?
Depends on how much you guys pull out of it. Remember that cable revolving fund now pays for IT services. IT services, what else?
IT.
Yeah, a bunch of things.
Yeah.
Computer, telephones.
Telephones is gonna take a while.
I think we put those back in. But anyways, it pays for, uh, some other things, equipments, things, IT equipment, um, things like that.
Okay. I would like to see, uh, I would like to see probably the cable committee buy one of those, I don't know what they call a unit, that you can, people can actually talk, and you can hear them on Zoom or something like that.
That's what you're doing now.
Well, if you're not on a, through the audio system, you don't, maybe you're on computers or something like that, or.
I don't quite follow.
It's called a cell phone show.
Yeah, whatever it's called, I don't.
Are you talking about a speakerphone?
Yes.
I know, there's a, there's more that you put in the center of a conference.
Oh, the star shaped thing.
Whatever it's called.
The star, yeah, I know what he's talking.
Those, I don't, I don't know if that would work in this environment.
Yeah, the, so, we, we're go, again, we're talking budgets, but the thing, and we can talk about this offline, is we experimented with a lot of different things to get that, what you're talking about. And what you're witnessing tonight is what works best. So, basically, is, somebody's gotta be in front of one of these microphones, either a lapel or that microphone. Or they're talking through the Zoom over the speakers.
All right, good enough. You got your marching orders. Run. Thank you.
Oh, boy.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, if I may ask a question. You're, um, you need basically to send out an email to all the departments saying, include the wages that you want the board to consider.
Yes.
And you say, no, we're gonna do a warrant, same, same percentage for everyone. So, you're putting it in, backing it out, we're creating almost another meeting throughout the entire town. Just a, just a heads up, because we're getting a late start, and I just don't wanna find us.
I, I agree to a point, but unless we see, like, I, I expect certain department heads to come in and say, look, in order for me to recruit and retain, here's where.
Yeah.
And they need to be able to explain this, right? Not just come in with a line item.
Yeah, that's, that's where I'm at.
I want some justification as to why. And if that's the case, then I will, I will be a hard proponent to say, get rid of COLA. And we need to put those in the, right? The cost of living increase in general across from every department the same, no. But if, but if we come back and I, we don't have the details, and it doesn't make sense, then I have to go with a, I would have to be, my one vote would be to COLA it. But I'd rather hear from them what they really need.
One, one concern would be, um, the, the impact on personnel. Because if the department says, say PD, in order to recruit, we have to raise our salaries ten percent. And then the decision is made to go to COLA at three and a half or four. They're gonna have some disappointed people.
This is my issue, that's my issue. That's why I wanna see what the department heads want.
Yeah, exactly.
I know that they're underfunded for personnel.
What they need.
This is why we can't recruit people to do things.
I think part of that problem, too, is, um, like what we've talked about, though, is some of the departments for other recruiting purposes and to maintain the staff would be, two key examples would be the police department and the fire department, which are two key issues that we're having a hard time keeping personnel because they're going somewhere else because of the salaries, uh, quite different than what this town is paying.
That's what I mean, and a COLA does nothing, nothing for those two departments.
But that's why I wanna see it, and I wanna justify it.
That's why I'm saying, I, I really think the department heads need to come here with what they want for raises. But not for raises, but for, for salaries. Their salary line, and maybe extrapolate on it, why, this is how we're gonna use it, because.
Because the town people need to know why. The town people need to know why.
Yep.
Right, it's not just about us approving it. If the PD says I need ten percent, or the fire department comes and says I need twenty-five percent, and here's why, and here's what others are doing, and it's justified, then it's, and it, it needs to be the town, the voter, that's gonna make a decision, but they vote on it based on facts and not these social media facts that aren't anything near it. But they need to see the true facts of what the cost is to maintain, whether it's police, fire, or even recruit. That's the way our world is right now.
If I could just kinda answer Jim's question. I, I think we can do it without, like, four more meetings, you know what I mean? You know what I mean? Like, I think I know what you're, you're getting at there, and I, I think it's basic, it's one meeting as a decision point. And to me, COLA is like a, a backup plan, anyway.
It's a blanket backup plan, I get it.
And just so that you're aware, the exercise that we're doing this evening is gonna come back to you again, including the wage adjustments that the department head would like you to put in the operating budget.
Sure, like, but, but some of these, we're not gonna see again.
No.
I don't expect to see the cemetery backup here, you know what I mean? Like, that's, that's done.
I expect the big ones.
It's pretty much done, you know?
Could be the police, fire.
I mean, well, I think, so my view of this is, we're gonna go through this, right? And there's people that are gonna come back to us, cause they're not right. Like, just for instance, the transfer station, he needs to come back to us. When we're done these interviews, we're probably gonna go to you, Jim, and be like, I wanna see the police department back here, I wanna see the fire department back here, and I wanna see X back here, so we can discuss it. You know what I mean? That's how I see this process going. That's how I've done it at, you know, with seventy-two million dollar budgets and ten million dollar budgets. So, that's how I see doing this. That way, the people that are doing the budgets have time to rebuild it or do what they want. We have time to figure out what we wanna do, and then that next meeting, when we ask for them to come back, that's when we come to the agreement, that's the number we're gonna go with. And everybody's in the room. You know, we're not making, we're not gonna make a decision on the transfer station budget without Pete here, you know? And that, that's why we're gonna do it that way. It may take a little bit of time, right? We gotta get a handle on this, cause it, it, yeah. Who's next?
Robin, we got anybody else tonight?
Ah, the next.
I'm doing general assistance on behalf of Tina.
Yes.
What is it?
General assistance. General assistance.
An anonymous comment.
General assistance, yeah.
Somebody online.
Really quick, just to remind you that you have.
You're back?
I haven't left, but you do have deadlines.
Yeah.
Okay, so, and I believe your budget hearing is January fifteenth? Is that the Monday? The public hearing for your budgets?
Fourteen.
I believe that's on Monday, January fifteenth.
Yeah, we're, we're pretty much meeting every week.
Yeah, we're.
Okay, so just keep, we'll keep, well, you've got Thanksgiving coming up, you know, you've got that holiday, and you've got Christmas, so just keep that in mind, that you do need to get that.
We are gonna meet Thanksgiving to go over the cable budget.
That's fine, I'll be around. Bring the turkey.
All right.
You got it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
As you can see, the general assistant budget has not changed. However, I will point out that the rent slash mortgage line is over expended. But the fuel general assistance line has had no expenses charged to it. So, it's not a bottom line issue at all, it's just rent. I spoke to Tina today, and she said it's just the way it's trending. And as far as the ju, the fuel, it's baffling to me because this twenty-three budget had January, February, and half a month in it.
Wasn't that cold?
Yeah, but if you look at your degree days coming into 2023, this is, and it's one of the warmest. Yeah, so I will tell you that that's not surprising to me based off.
Yeah, cause it wasn't that cold. It really wasn't.
Last year?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was.
And by the way, I just paid, I just paid today's propane.
That doesn't make a difference, cause you gotta turn the heat on at some point.
Right, but if they were able to stretch their heat longer this year, this last season, because it wasn't, I mean, we only got like two snowstorms. Everything else was rain.
Yeah.
You know, so, we really didn't get hit with a, with a really, really frigid cold thing. I mean, we had like one, two days that it was really cold, but that was actually, might have even been the year before.
Yeah, it didn't actually get cold till, I think, really January.
Yeah, so.
My father wouldn't let us turn on the heat until like the first of February.
The first of February.
Do you have a question from the audience?
From Tony.
Yes. I just wanted to remind everyone that there was a negative twenty degrees the day of deliberative session.
Oh, yeah.
Like, it was, it was in the negatives in February, it was really, really cold.
That's right.
But, but that's all, that's all, continue, you guys are doing great.
Thank you. What's tomorrow's weather looking like right now?
Good Lord, stop it.
Yeah, up, up your way.
Up your way.
My whole ride to upstate New York is gonna be snow.
So, um, nothing out of the ordinary, nothing unusual?
Yeah, I would keep this where it is.
She's good.
Yeah.
So, I am going to make a motion to accept the general assistant draft budget as written for inclusion in the overall draft budget.
Seconded by Mr. Conley. All in favor?
Aye.
Are you unanimous?
You can get that one, buddy.
Gotta make him feel, you know, you gotta throw the dog a bone once in a while.
Exactly.
All right, the next budget is assessing. As you know, the community may not know, we contacted our assessing services. We have a contract assessor in the town hall every Wednesday throughout the year. And that's the general assessing fund at thirty thousand, you can see. Assessing dues are what has to be put in this budget. So, the New Hampshire Municipal Association will give us assessing assistance. So, it's, it's like a, a fee, if you will.
Right.
But again, no change from the prior year.
So, does this change? If we have to do our, like, our five-year total assessment reevaluation, does this number change?
Yes, we're, we're going to have to have a conversation. I learned today that you can do it every four years or every five years. It's guesstimated to cost above fifty thousand dollars. If we establish a capital reserve fund for revals, you could ask the voters for ten grand over five years, instead of getting that fifty grand blip that throws everything out of whack, and we're scouring to find the fifty thousand dollar delta. But if you put, put it out all the time, it's kind of a, it's kind of the idea, really, of, um, what a capital reserve is. It's to let money accumulate off budget, so that when you need to make a big purchase, it doesn't whack your budget. So, I guess I would propose that at some point, you talk about having a warrant article that establishes a capital reserve fund for cyclical revaluation.
Cause we just had that five year, right?
Yeah.
Done.
Two years ago.
Two years ago.
Yeah.
So, I was told twenty twenty-five, so that'd be about right, right?
Yeah, I think that, that lines up, yeah.
You're getting out of Dodge just in time.
That was two years.
Yeah, exactly. Is it two years, one year, something like that? All these years run together.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's, that's fine.
So, again, not all to talk about. The contract with, um, is it Murdoch, or Murdo?
Yeah, the, I think that was the last time. A couple of times ago, we did get three quotes and, you know, kinda shopped it around, but.
So, this is, it's an annual contract that requires DRA approval, Department of Revenue Administration approval at the state level for the language within the contract, not necessarily the dollar value, but to make sure that you're getting everything you're supposed to get from an assessing contractor.
You got anything, Matt?
No. You want me to make the motion?
Wanna make that motion, Matt?
Yes, no one else is gonna do it.
Apparently. I would, I would move to accept the assessing draft budget for inclusion in the overall draft budget as written.
Second.
Seconded by Mike, all in favor?
The next one.
Health.
I'll try not to get lost on this one.
So, as you can see, the budget contains one line for office supplies, and apparently, no one has ever told the health officer that he has two hundred dollars to spend on office supplies. Because it's not been expended.
Because he never shows up.
Well, he probably, probably doesn't have to use office supplies to do what he needs to do.
He doesn't have to come here for anything.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
So, and that's it, office supplies, two hundred dollars.
Matt?
Wanna let it rip again, Matt?
I would move to accept the draft health department budget for inclusion in the overall draft budget.
Second.
Seconded by Mike, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous it is. I like these ones.
We're done.
Very good.
For now.
With the budgets.
Yes.
Now, let's get, Joe, you got your vocal cords ready?
Nah, not quite.
Polished up.
Oh, try.
Robin printed an extra big lettuce for you.
Well, that's what I said. Let's go. Me, 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 over there?
Okay, hold on a second.
Oh, my goodness.
Okay, we're going to, oh, we need.
Approvals.
Oh, wait a minute, what about an ARPA update? Yeah, come on.
The ARPA update.
I didn't come to an opera. Is there an opera here?
So, I'm gonna, since you've had such an exciting and riveting meeting tonight, I'm gonna throw another cork through into it for you. So, at four fifteen today, I received the quote from our engineer for the expansion of Granny Park Parking Lot from KV Partners. One thousand four hundred and ninety dollars to come from ARPA. Here's my problem. I got it today at four fifteen, and manifesto's due next Wednesday. You are meeting, I know, for budgets on Tuesday. If I bring the requisition on Tuesday?
Next week, we're meeting on Wednesday.
Yeah, we're doing a Wednesday.
Okay, well, the.
There's a planning board.
Oh, and you guys signed the manifest early on Wednesday, right? So, I don't even have till four o'clock on Wednesday to get you this to sign it, so that he can get going. Cause it is time sensitive.
How long does it take for you to put it together?
I, I, all I have to do is do the requisition, I've already got the invoice, and bring it to a meeting for you.
What about a not to exceed?
We could do a not to exceed, or she could put it together, and Robin could just.
I mean, I have the actual.
She's got an actual window.
I have the actual, one thousand four hundred and ninety dollars. I just, because of the time with the manifesto and your meetings, I'd like to be able to tell them, go for it and get going while the weather's not bad.
I think we can do it with a motion, you know?
Okay.
The whole.
For KV Partners.
I'll tell you what, so why don't you read through it, what you need?
Okay.
Cause that'll be our motion.
All right. Yeah, we'll read the whole two pages, but I'll read you what he says.
Just, yep, just what the motion is, and the dollar amount is what we need.
Okay.
Good luck, buddy.
It says.
What it's for.
This is dated today, November eighth, from KV Partners LLC. And it is for Granny Park, Granny Parking Lot Expansion Engineering Services.[1701.68] He includes the scope, whoops, I need magnifying glass, the scope and schedule and the total fees, project amount is $1,490.
I make a motion to allow KV Partners to do their engineering evaluation and use ARPA funds for 1,000, how much?
$490.
$490.
Seconded by Joe, all in favor?
Aye.
Let's make it happen.
There you go, knock that one right off the list.
See? Isn't that an easy report, guys?
Oh, that's a good one.
Thank you, Trish.
Thanks.
And that's the exception to the new rule of.
Yes, that's an exception.
Yeah, call it an emergency.
Yes. Okay, now Joe.
Okay, that's a lot of reading, Bob.
Because you do it so well.
Okay, here we go. Fire requisition dash 1064. I move to approve requisition number 1064 FD to Fire Matic Supply Company in the amount of $2,700 to replace a non-serviceable meter from account number 4220303.
Second.
Seconded by Dan, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous.
I move to appoint Brandon Andinozio as a part-time police officer with an effective date of October 9, 2023.
Second.
Seconded by Dan, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous.
Animal control officer, I move to appoint Thomas Wilson Frascone to the animal control officer position with an effective date of October 16th, 2023.
Second.
Seconded by Dan, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous.
Veterans tax credit, I move to sign veterans track, tax credit from MAP 13-3-11-81, beginning tax year 2024.
Second.
Seconded by Dan, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous. Manifest.
Excuse me, I move to approve a withdrawal in the amount of $1,015.06 from the Cable Revolving Fund, account number 391293, to pay invoice to Ramone Networks with a pay date of October 24th, 2023.
Second.
Seconded by Dan, all in favor?
Aye.
I move to approve a withdrawal in the amount of $2,396 on the Recreation Revolving Fund with a pay date of October 24th, 2023.
Second.
Seconded by Dan, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
I move to approve a withdrawal in the amount of $6,000 from the Conservation Revolving Fund to pay invoices for, oh, excuse me, to KMA Tree Services and SEC Surveying and Engineering with a pay date of October 24th, 2023.
Second.
Seconded by Dan, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
I move to approve a withdrawal in the amount of $22,523.66 from the Ambulance Revolving Fund to pay for an invoice to AJA Auto Repair LLC for the repair of the ambulance with a pay date of October 24th, 2023.
Second.
Seconded by Dan, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
I move to approve under manifest in the amount of $1,208,650.46 with the pay date of October 24th, 2023. Payment includes $1,024,271 to the Sanborn Regional School District.
Second.
Seconded by Dan, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
I move to approve payroll manifest in the amount of $80,914.50 for pay period October 8th through the 21st, 2023, with a pay date of October 26th, 2023. This manifest includes $82.68 and the ARPA administrative costs.
Second.
Seconded by Dan, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
I move to approve under manifest in the amount of $654,872.11 with the pay date of November 7th, 2023. Payment includes $547,083 and $83 to the Rockingham County Treasurer.
Second.
Seconded by Dan, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
I move to approve a withdrawal in the amount of $6,482.60 from the Cable Revolving Fund, account number 391293, to pay invoices to Ramone Networks in the amount of $5,764 and to Hewlett Packard Financial Services in the amount of $748.60 with the pay date of November 7th, 2023.
Second.
Seconded by Dan, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
I move to approve a withdrawal in the amount of $143,915.36 from the Highway Construction Fund with the pay date of November 7th, 2023.
Second.
Seconded by Dan, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
I move to approve payroll manifest in the amount of $46,569.53 for pay period October 23rd, 22nd through November 4th, 2023, with a pay date of November 9th, 2023. This manifest includes $41.34 in the ARPA administrative costs.
Second.
Seconded by Dan, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Onto minutes.
Minutes, I move to approve and accept the public meeting minutes dated October 17th, 2023 as written.
Second.
Seconded by Dan, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
I move to approve and accept the non-public minutes meeting, meeting, excuse me, I move to approve and accept the non-public meeting minutes dated October 17th, 2023 as written.
Second.
Seconded by Dan, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
I move to approve and accept the non-public minutes, meeting minutes dated October 25th, 2023 as written.
Second.
Seconded by Dan, all in favor?
Aye.
That would be unanimous. Actions, items, new and old business. First one is Greenie Shed.
Just want to say that we found a situation down at Greenie, Greenie, and it was addressed, it was cleaned up, and, and I think we need to have some general oversight with the, the folks that use that facility, so we have an understanding as to how things are, should be done moving forward.
I think we kind of addressed that when we talked a little bit about that, about getting somebody to be able to run the recreational as far as, we were talking about the ball field and, and whatever.
Rec coordinator.
The rec coordinator would be the, the term.
Yeah, I would, I would say currently, this is not a agenda item for a board of selectmen's meeting. This is for the recreation meeting.
Right. Yep, so that's where we're at with that.
So I, I don't think we should be putting this on any future BOS agendas. If it needs to be brought up, it gets brought up.
No, the situation was addressed and it's taken care of and it's been better.
So that's where we're at with that, and Joe, the 275th anniversary celebration update?
Okay, just as an update, a couple of things, we, we're up to 25 people now in our committee, and I think we have, we're always looking for more people, anyone who's willing, anyone from a business, a civic organization, or whatever, be welcome to join us. Our next meeting will be next Wednesday afternoon, next Wednesday afternoon, or we, in the town hall at noon time. We've got a couple of things we've done already, we've, we've got a webpage up for communication within the, within the members and also for people to offer outside input. We've identified four to five events that we could possibly do tied in with Old Home Day, a couple of them being, being a parade and a firework event. We're also working on fundraising. We have a few ideas on fundraising, how to, you know?
Nice.
Get some funding going, so, so the group is moving forward, and I think we've been meeting every week now for the past month or so, month and a half, and I think down the road, we'll probably go every two weeks and break it up to, you know, for the individual committees to, to do this.
Nice.
So it's moving along, I think it's, it's moving along at a pretty good pace. We did get, we did get quotes in from three firework companies this week, so we'll see where, where that all goes.
Did you guys contact the local one?
Ah, the local one, being American, yes.
You did?
Yes.
Okay.
We contacted American, I think PDI and Atlas, which is now Pyro something, or they have a new name now.
Okay.
Nice to see that a lot of people have stepped up.
We could always use more volunteers.
Yeah.
We get more volunteers, the events could be a lot, you know, could be a lot, I don't know, just, just, more help is always good.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, you saw how many volunteers they had in the first one.
Yeah, which is nice.
Yeah.
It's good.
Very good. Anything else?
Just, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. So Saturday, November 11th, our Veterans Day Ceremony will be at 11:11 a.m. at the Junction Station Fire Station. The church is holding a complimentary breakfast for any veterans, starting at 9:30 a.m. at the Junction Fire Station. So I know Robin's been taking RSVPs just, just for the church's planning purposes, but we, we had a deadline of October 6th, but that deadline can certainly be extended if you want to reach out to, everything's on the website.
So the breakfast isn't at the church?
It's at the Junction Station, which is owned by the church, so it's in that, that dining area in there, so. So just wanted to get that commercial out there, but it looks like the weather's gonna be nice, so it should all be outside for the ceremony.
Bob, I have one more announcement to make. We're gonna be doing a holiday tree lighting this year with the help of the rec commission and some volunteers. It's gonna be December 3rd at the schoolhouse, the schoolhouse down here on South Main Street. So we'll have more information for that to follow.
Cool.
Very nice. Ms. McCarthy?
Sorry. I just, I know that you are gonna maybe go into a non-public at some point in time to discuss those towers. I'm gonna request, only because I've been taking the lead on this, there's certain things public safety needs, I'd love to either be considered or let, maybe give you a list of stuff that police, fire, highway need, so that when you're evaluating, you can do apples for apples to see what they're offering.
Please do.
If that's okay.
Yep.
Okay.
Jim?
Just as an, oh, by the way, I looked at the 2023 warrant, you had 20 articles, in my quick view, I think we can get it down to nine.
That would be nice.
I think it would be helpful.
Agreed.
Good deal.
Anything else?
No.[1693.02]